The underlying project for which the board received a petition for an EAW is being considered is the proposed improvement to Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch 33. The board has authority over this ditch as the drainage authority. Right now, the board's gonna wear a different hat as what's called the Responsible Governmental Unit, which comes from the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board's rules. The board has not yet ordered the project to be constructed. That will be a different proceeding under 103E. The board received the petition for an EAW on May 9th, 2023. We did not hold the hearing or any other decision making at that time because there was no final project being considered. On February 20th, 2024, the board received the engineer's final recommendation. So now, the board has in front of it an actual project that it can consider against the petition that it received and weigh the environmental claims that are being made in the petition compared to the actual project. Now, this is not a public hearing, and so there won't be any public comment period. However, the board has allowed the petitioner's representative 20 minutes to present their petition and also has allowed 20 minutes for the drainage engineer, ISG, to come and give rebuttal evidence if necessary. Now, the standard of review, I just want to walk you through it now. After the petitioners and ISG present, I can walk you all through that again, but just so you have it in the back of your mind. You're looking for the potential for significant environmental effects. Now, what does this mean? Basically, it is have the project and does that project itself present any potential for significant environmental effects? There must be evidence for your decision to order the EAW to proceed. So at this point, I would ask if there's any questions for me before we proceed.
Any clarifying questions from commissioners?
Oh, I don't have any at this point.
Thank you, Hannah. Then I will now ask the petitioner to come forward. Jerry Wilhelm to introduce yourself for the record. And we go with 20 minutes, so I have 9:05. So we will end at 9:25 if necessary. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Jerry Wilhelm, as you've already mentioned. I'm here to represent the petitioners in this case. Just a little background for me. I was born on a farm community 10 miles outside Albert Lee. Both my grandfathers farmed, my dad farmed, and I farmed too. Only I was the guy that hoisted the bales and carried the pails. I didn't make any of the decisions or get any of the money. After I left home, I went to law school and I served down in Fairmont for almost 20 years as first an assistant Martin County attorney and then the Martin County attorney for 13 up and through 1991. So I know how hard it is to make these decisions. I've sat on your side of that bench in many meetings. So I am appreciative of getting this chance to address you. Now, the EAW petition is simply my way of asking you to consider how your actions may cause flooding and silting problems for your downstream neighbors, and that includes me. The handout that you have before you outlines my remarks. I only have 20 minutes and a lot of information to convey. And so if I'm going too fast and it feels like you're drinking out of a fire hose, you could look at the outline and catch up, so to speak. The last half of that outline, by the way, are footnotes that tie my remarks into the exhibits that I submitted with the EAW petition over a year ago. Now, as Ms. Chacral mentioned, the rules provide that an EAW should be completed if there, quote, "may be potential for a significant environmental effect from the project." The rules that she mentioned provide a four-factor test. First, you are to consider whether the type, extent, and reversibility of the environmental effects are significant. Next, you are to consider the cumulative effects of those environmental results. Third, you are to consider the extent that the effects that we've mentioned are subject to mitigation by any other public authority. And fourth, whether or not the extent can be, these effects, rather, can be anticipated or controlled by other environmental studies. One of those factors has five sub-factors, which I'll get to in a moment. But first, let's talk about the type, extent, and reversibility of the environmental effects. The type of effects we're talking about is, first of all, the tremendously increased flow, peak flows of the La Sure River. Now, JD 33, as you well know, outlets onto a sort of spillway near the La Sure River. The water from that ditch ends up in the river. Secondly, that high river flow that we talked about just a moment ago results in increased generation of a tremendous amount of silt that finds its way into the Mississippi River via the Minnesota River and finally down to the river that runs right by my house, the Mississippi. That sediment is generated largely by the La Sure River. Although it only comprises 7% of the watershed of the Minnesota River or the greater Blue Earth River basin, it contributes 24 to 30% of the sediment to that river. And the reason for that is the geology that surrounds the La Sure River. Itself, it runs through glacial till. The same glacial till that makes farmland around here so productive makes it easily erodible. And so as the river rises, it washes away its own banks. And in the La Sure River's case, it also cuts into the bluffs, which are near the mouth of the river. Those bluffs can be 200 feet tall, and they're not the bluffs that I think of. When I think of bluffs, I think of Wisconsin Dells with all the stone. These are dirt. And so as the river rises, it undercuts these bluffs and they collapse into the river and generate an enormous amount of silt. That's why the La Sure generates so much silt, even though it's only 7% of the watershed. Studies have shown that even a small amount of additional water coming into the La Sure River in its impaired condition can generate a tremendous amount of sediment. We'll get into the mathematics of all that in a little while. But suffice it to say that there is a threshold beyond which, if the river rises, the silt generation doesn't keep pace with the rise, it rises exponentially on a hockey stick-shaped curve. Once done, the deposition of silt into that river is irreversible. There isn't a science that takes it out. Nothing's gonna happen to it. It's gonna end up in the Minnesota River. It's gonna end up in the Mississippi. The La Sure is already at a critical stage. In order to meet clean water standards, the silt in that river would have to be reduced 86%, a tremendous, almost impossible goal. Second, let's look at effect number two. The cumulative potential effects of this increased flow coming out of JD 33. Now, this is the factor that has five sub-factors in it. First, whether the cumulative potential effect is significant. Next, whether the contribution from the project is significant when viewed in combination with all the other effects causing this increased water. Third, the degree to which the project complies with approved mitigation measures. And fourth, yes, I guess there's only four sub-factors, not five, I'm sorry. The efforts of the proposer to minimize the contribution. So let's start with whether the cumulative effect, potential effect, is significant. Let's talk about silt first. Now, the Minnesota River into which La Sure eventually dumps, together with the Blue Earth River not far from here, contributes about 75% of the total suspended solids in the Mississippi River between the Twin Cities and Lake Pepin. Lake Pepin has lost 17% of its volume because of this. The silt also drops in the navigation channel between Fort Snelling and Lake Pepin. The Army Corps of Engineers is required by law to dredge that channel to a depth of nine feet. To do that, the Army Corps dredges day and night, seven days a week, 365 days a year, at a cost to the taxpayers of $45 million a year. That's a significant cost for the deposition of silt. And it's getting worse. The exhibits attached, specifically the Greater Blue Earth RAPS report, shows that water quality in the La Sure is degrading. It's getting worse, and the water flow is getting higher. So let's turn to what this water does downstream to our neighbors. Flooding is really what we're talking about. Along the La Sure River itself in this county, houses that were built 100 feet away from the shore are now in danger of falling into the river because the La Sure has widened to such an extent that it undercuts the foundations of these houses. You can see the pictures in the, not in the materials before you now, but in the petition. That's not all. Here in Mankato, decades ago, flood walls had to be built to keep the river out of downtown. That cost the taxpayers $96 million. A little further upstream, or downstream, rather, is the city of Henderson. City of 900 people, it floods every year. This year might be an exception because of the dry winter, but every other year it floods. And three times during the last 10 years, Henderson has been completely surrounded by floodwater. Cut off, it's an island. The Minnesota Department of Transportation is trying to solve this problem, and in doing so, it undertook a study of how much it cost Henderson when it was isolated. Their result was that it cost Henderson $87,000 a day. It's a small town that relies on tourism, and when it's surrounded by flooding, nobody comes. So the Minnesota Department of Transportation is going to fix the problem. But to fix it, it has to elevate Highway 19 eight feet above its current level. Eight feet. That's gonna cost taxpayers $30 million. Further downstream in Shakopee, the flood capital of the Southern Metro, a stretch of road a mile long had to be raised 24 feet above its current level to avoid flooding at a cost of $54 million. $54 million here, $30 million there, $48 million. Pretty soon, you're talking about serious money. And that's all because of these floodwaters, this increased flow. Next, is that significant when viewed in connection with other contributions? Now, JD 33 isn't the only ditch that drains into the La Sure or near it. There are other counties, other ditches, and they all dump into the La Sure. However, a proposed improvement, when considered in concert with all these others, is still significant because this ditch lies nearly at the end of the 111-mile stretch of the La Sure River. JD 33 adds its water after all the other county ditches have added theirs. Now, there are other ditches further downstream, but not as many as there are upstream. So as we talked earlier about this threshold or tipping point, there's a point at which the flood in the La Sure starts to generate sediment at a very, very high rate. It's called, the graph that shows this rate is called the hockey stick graph because that's how it's shaped after a while. And you can find it on exhibit 50 and at page 50. It's also reproduced in your materials on page four. So if you look at that, you'll see that large arrow in the middle points to a red line. That red line is the threshold. You'll see beyond that red line that sediment generation goes up exponentially. Now, what's that mean in terms of JD 33? Well, engineers who I consult with tell me that at the Rapidan gauge, which is 12 or 13 miles from where JD 13 dumps in, the flood level or that threshold level is 1,015 cubic feet per second. Now, the engineer's report indicates, for this ditch, indicates that the drainage coefficient will be increased from .19 inches a day to .51 inches a day. Doesn't sound like a lot, but if you pencil that out, what it means is that this drainage ditch will increase the discharge at the mouth of that pipe 8.6 cubic feet per second per square mile. Now JD 33 has a drainage area of 1.89 miles. So the net increase from the coefficient is 16.2 cubic feet per second at the pipe. I have the mathematics that support this in a memorandum, if you care to look at it. But in any case, the watershed of JD 33 represents .17% of the entire La Sure watershed. You would expect that the water of 1 point or .17% would be .17% of the flow. It's not. It's 10 times that. The increased flow calculated by this engineering memo would be 1.6% of the flood threshold at the Rapidan gauge, 10 times the area drained by the JD 33. So you see, it's adding a lot of water considering its square mileage. And it's adding water at the end of an already flooded river, potentially pushing it over that threshold mark. So when you think about all the other ditches and then add this, the effect is significant. Now, that's especially true when you think about those bluffs and how easily they are eroded. Now, fourth factor, the degree to which the project complies with approved mitigation measures. The engineer's report says that not only will this improvement not increase the flow, it will actually decrease it, and it will do so by draining water that would otherwise go over- And it will do so by draining water that would otherwise go overland into the river into what they call water quality inlets. And I think, if I'm reading the construction plans right, there are four of them. That's designed to reduce agricultural non-point source pollution, it says in the report. This appears to be the only mitigation effort in the plan as it exists before the board today. Now, while this measure may reduce some sediment, it won't address the main problem of increased flow. Let me explain why. Water quality inlets are designed to catch sediment, not water, and then not designed to reduce water flow. 20% of the sediment that goes into a river comes off fields. 80% of it, of that silt, comes from the bank's erosion and the bluff erosion, 80%. So even if this works, it's only addressing 20% of the sediment. What's more, all the water that's draining into those inlets used to flow overland into the river. Now, if it's, if it works as designed, that water still flows into the river. Only it flows into the river through the tile because all those inlets that are catching the water route that water to the tile and it comes out the end of JD 33. So the inlets aren't really reducing the amount of water, they're increasing it. Because if the water runs across the land, some of it evaporates and some of it soaks in. We're losing that advantage if the water goes right into the inlets and out, out the tile. Now, fourth, what efforts have the proposer made, has the proposer made to minimize the contributions of the project? We've already talked about the water quality inlets. But on the earlier version of the engineer's report, he offered the board an option for on-land storage. I'm sorry, I was gratified to see that there was on-land storage proposed, and I'm sorry to see it's not in the final, in the final version. Just a side note, one of the things that the engineer mentioned in his, in his earlier final engineer report was that the water storage location was out of the watershed of JD 33, and so it would have to be paid for in some other way. The legislature this last session approved 17 million in grant funding for just these purposes. And so there is money available should the board choose to pursue that option. Now, the third of the major factors is the extent to which that effects are subject to mitigation by ongoing public regulation. The DNR is the only agency that I own that has authority to regulate this project. This board, I think, and the engineer believe that a water, water permit is not necessary. So, if that's true and this board goes ahead with the project, there isn't any other regulatory authority that can control the bad effects. Last, you must consider the extent that effects can be anticipated or controlled by other environmental studies. Well, members of the board, this problem has been studied for decades. There are lots of studies out there, and the science only goes one way. Farm drainage accounts for 50% of the increased flow in the La Sourd River, 50%. The other 50% comes from increased precipitation, but half of it comes from tiles just like this one. That extra water creates more sediment per unit in the La Sourd River than any other river in the watershed of the Blue Earth River. No study in all those years has ever come to any other conclusion. Many of those studies are included in the 31 exhibits that are before you. Let me just wrap up quickly. The La Sourd is under stress now. Adding more water is going to stress it even more. And so these, this project has the potential for severe and adverse environmental effects. Now, I know doing the right thing isn't easy. Your constituents don't like it, the farmers on the assessment rolls don't want to pay for it. You probably feel like it's a necessary burden, and for one, here's an outsider trying to tell you what to do. But let me help you think about it in a different way. When you, say you improve your house, and you're a handy person. You go out, you buy your materials, you pay for those, you build your own addition, and when it's done, what do you end up with? A dumpster full of construction waste. Now, you wouldn't dream of taking that waste out, dumping it in the street, and letting your neighbors pay for it, would you? No, you pay for taking it away. But now, in this case, farmers who have petitioned this board for an improvement have paid for that improvement through their assessments, but they want to take that waste, all that water, and dump it in the river and make the downstream neighbors pay for it. That's just not right. Lot has changed since I've been sitting on your side. And one of the things that hasn't changed all bad is that people come into a room with preconceived notions. I hope that's not the case here, but I must admit that when I saw the comment in the engineer's memorandum that it was amended for the specific purpose of denying this petition, I got a little concerned. I'm not here trying to tell you how to design your project or not to do it. I'm simply asking you to consider ordering an EAW to consider and measure those effects on the downstream neighbors like me. Fixing this project won't fix the La Sourd, not all by itself, but it's a responsible step in the right direction, and I urge you to take it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I would ask commissioners, you have any clarifying questions at this time? Thank you. At this time, I'd ask ISG to present. We will do the same thing, maximum of 20 minutes. Please identify yourself for the record, Jacob, and we're at 9:25 for a start. Go ahead.
Yeah, just got to get my screen up there. Okay, thank you. We'll wait for that. And there we go. Hello, my name is Jacob Mueller. Today, I will be discussing judicial dictation number 33, the project which we propose on it, and as well as the EAW petition which it concerns. I have with me today Jen Widmer, PE, and Julie Blackman, CFM, to answer questions as they see fit. A bit of what we're going to be going over today is some background information. What is the existing condition of this system? What is the watershed's characteristics? Why is there a proposed project? And what is the proposed project? All of this to gain a base of information as to going forward and looking at these concerns brought forward in the EAW petition. At that point, we'll review those concerns, bring forward the material evidence put forward in the petition, and also provide the engineer's response to those claims. Before we get into all that, I'd like to acknowledge the reasons that we summarize that we saw in this petition for the petition. These include degradation of water quality, the validity of the prepared model, wetland impacts, increased peak flows delivered to the La Sourd River, and sediment delivery to the La Sourd River. So, with all that said, I'd like to go over the basics of the system. Why is there a project now? What is currently out there? Here we see a map of the Blue Earth Judicial Dictation Number 33 watershed. As you can see, the tile outlet outlets in the northeast corner of the watershed, drains into an existing stilling basin, which then outlets into a riparian area, which subsequently outlets into the La Sourd River. This tile outlet is presently a 26-inch tile, which is subsequently downsized to an 18-inch tile roughly 1,100 feet upstream. As that 18-inch tile crosses 623rd Avenue, it accepts a 24-inch tile and a 26-inch tile. So an 18-inch tile is accepting two significantly larger tiles. This 18-inch tile is also significantly steeper than the area tile to gain that capacity. The 24-inch tile, it was a subsequently improved mainline, and the 26-inch tile was the original mainline. This is not co- this is not common engineering practice to accept two larger tiles with a significantly smaller one. A little bit more basic information, this watershed is entirely within McPherson Township. Drains a little over 1,200 acres of agricultural land. It's very flat, only 40 feet of fall throughout the entire watershed. And this is all coupled with a very slowly infiltrating watershed. Soil type is type CD, meaning that it requires drainage to be adequately farmed. The 18-inch tile draining two larger tiles is not the only interesting point to note with this watershed. As we've noted, the existing tile outlet drains to the north. The overland outlet is not in the same location. When initially constructed, they chose the path of shortest distance to the river rather than following the overland flow path. As you can see in the zoom picture on the bottom right, the overland flow path exists to the south. So these two locations are different, but overland flow does exit the watershed at that location. Looking a little bit into capacities, we see again that that 18-inch tile is accepting two significantly larger tiles. This decrease in tile diameter causes a pressurized system. This has resulted in frequent blowouts that have been made, that have made repairs necessary by the Drainage Authority over the past years. These blowouts also result in excess overland flow. In the picture in the bottom of your, of the screen, you can see where this ponding is occurring and that overland flow routing outside of the watershed towards the bluffs of the La Sourd River, which will inevitably flow over those bluffs and into the La Sourd River. This is also a result of the inadequate capacity present at this location. With this understanding of the inadequacies, failures, and failures of the system, we can take a very short look into the proposed project to gain an understanding. So, the goal of this project is not widespread improvement. It is an improvement of just the outlet up to past the 18-inch tile, which currently bottlenecks and restricts the system and causes blowouts. This would be a 36-inch tile at the outlet, downsizing to a 30-inch. This would route just past 623rd Avenue where it would connect just upstream of that 18-inch tile, thus bypassing it. This would increase capacity, reduce failure, and reduce the very large overland flow rates presently seen. Just a basic view of the proposed watershed. You can see here that the proposed tile would replace the existing outlet in the same location. It would follow roughly the same alignment, and it would connect those lines just upstream of 623rd Avenue. With that base understanding of the project, why we are doing the project, what, what the purposes there are, we can start taking a look into the EAW petition claims and our responses. So, following the submission for the petition for EAW by the petitioner's representative, Jerry Wilhelm, ISG reviewed the concerns brought forward, and here we'll be discussing those comments, material evidence associated with that, and the engineer's response. The first thing I'd like to discuss is some of the material evidence present within the petition. 24 documents were referenced within the EAW petition that were specifically delineated within the petition. A few documents were received after that fact. Those were also reviewed and taken into account by the engineer. The first one I'd like to discuss is exhibit number three, titled Memorandum from Two Minnesota Engineers Kramer and Solstang. This material evidence is neither signed nor dated. It exhibits a spelling error in one of the engineer's names. So we've got Solstang or Sanstang. So the validity of it is somewhat in question. Additional to this, there's a basic misunderstanding of the wetland characteristics through which the project routes. They assume that the watershed drains into these wetlands where actually, as the tile cuts through this hillside, those wetlands are actually draining the opposite direction. So that hydrology is not impacted. Additional to this, these engineers also state that they are reviewing the model for quote-unquote deficiencies. A model was never requested by these individuals and therefore never supplied. We don't know if they have one, we don't know what versioning it would be, and therefore we cannot know whether that is valid or not. With all that in mind, this material evidence was the sole material evidence that related specifically to Blue Earth JD 33. All of the other material evidence was TMDLs, RAPS reports, and other, other large-scale watershed-related plans. Being that, with the exception of the engineer-prepared FER and the DNR advisory. Additional, another exhibit received was exhibit 31, the Greater Blue Earth River Watershed RAPS 2023. This watershed restoration and protection strategy report does not focus on the La Sourd River. Rather, it focuses on the Greater Blue Earth River. The La Sourd River does outlet into the Blue Earth River near its terminus, but that is not the focus area, as you can see in the picture, which was taken from that RAPS report. With that, I'd like to get into some of the comments. I should note, at the front end of this, we have split these comments up into two different sections. The first being general concerns and comments, and the second being primary environmental concerns. Each section has three comments brought forward. The first of the general concerns is, "Evidence that accompanies this position shows that the proposed project may significantly degrade water quality through sedimentation and nitrate pollution, cause channel destabilization and erosion due to increased water flow, destroy wetlands, diminish fish and wildlife habitat, and increase flooding." The, the first response I'd like to bring up with this, and that will resonate throughout the majority of these responses, is that this comment does not recognize the data tabulated and justified within the report. Reduced flow rates across all modeled events for both proposed options, both with and without wetland enhancement, show cumulatively reduced peak flow rates. Additional to this, when we start looking at portions of the comment that discuss sedimentation and nitrate pollution and destroying wetlands, well, a portion of this project would actually, if approved, go towards restoring a wetland, bolstering nutrient capture, bolstering storage, and finally bolstering habitat potential for fish and wildlife. A bit of evidence to support this is the modeling results present within the final report and final recommendation. As you can see here, yes, flows are increased at the tile outlet. The goal of this project, as I was saying, was to reduce overland flow and failure. When we look at the next line in this table, we see that flow rates through overland transmission, which carry large amounts of sediment, are significantly reduced in association with those increases in tile flows. When you look at the cumulative impacts, at the maximum, we show a slight net decrease, and at the maximum, we show an 18% decrease as compared to the existing condition. The second comment brought forward is, "The statement regarding the use of water quality inlets to reduce sediment transport completely misses the point. As peak flows are increased by the project, 65% of the sediment in the river comes from erosion of its own banks." Once again, proposed, or turbidity is not wholly proposed to be decreased by use of water quality inlets. These are an additive measure. The existing condition currently exhibits open orifices and road ditches which accept flow. This is merely an additive measure to reduce that level of sediment transport within the, within those road ditches rather than free access to an open orifice. Rather, turbidity is proposed to be reduced by the aforementioned reduced peak flow rates and reduced velocities. As they noted within their petition, 65% of the sediment within the river is primarily sourcing from erosion within its own banks. Reduced flow rates and reduced velocities, as was noted, will reduce that erosion. A bit of supporting evidence to this, before we get into this, I'd like to highlight a few things. There's three outlet locations for this watershed. We've discussed the tile outlet location, which consists of a tile outlet which drains into a scour pool, then into that riparian area, and finally the La Sourd River. Outlet location two is the overland outlet, and outlet location number three is drained by county ditch number one. The mainline tile in this location extends into the same basin that is drained by Blue Earth JD 33. So, we've looked at flow rates. I thought it was also important to look at velocities in this point, too. Velocities are increased specifically and just at the tile outlet. Following this, we would propose, we are proposing an improvement to the existing scour pool by armoring it with additional rip rap. Those calculations performed indicated that at that scour pool outlet, velocities would be reduced. So that is outlet location one. At outlet location two, the overland outlet, we're also showing significant velocity reductions that accompany those significant flow rate reductions. And as there's no improvement proposed in the upstream portions of the watershed, there's relatively little change to the CD1 flow rates or velocities. Additional evidence to support this, response from the engineer. The DNR had requested that we perform shear stress calculations to determine the potential of soil transmissibility at this outlet location. This was performed by the engineer, and we compared the existing condition and the proposed condition. Now, the existing condition exhibits bare soils in areas that we would propose to armor. At this, we found that between the 10 and 25-year event, we would expect to see soil transmission, that the permissible shear stress would be exceeded. In the proposed condition, with this additive armoring, this would not be exceeded up until even the 50-year event. So a much more stable condition. Third of the, of the first section of comments is, "Finally, it is not at all clear that overland flows would be reduced significantly." This is a theme that was brought up in several locations throughout the petition. I'll read a couple others. On page 16, "There is reason to question these calculations. A reduction in, of overland flow being reduced by 98% seems surprising. The final engineering report does not include what inputs were used to obtain this astonishing result, nor what modeling software was used." Again, on page five of the EAW petition. "The engineer report also concludes without any supporting data that overland flows would be reduced, thus reducing sediment runoff." Something that I'd like to point out- Something that I'd, I'd like to point out here very clearly is that in all of our reports, PER, FER, final recommendation, we were very clear that ICM, Infowar's ICM software was used. This is an acceptable software, reviewable by the Minnesota DNR. Standard model inputs were utilized and are clearly tabulated within the hydraulic appendix of the report. With that, and besides our own internal calibration and verification, this was sent to the DNR for verification. On a, on a memo received on October 16th, 2023, the DNR Model Review Team had performed a review on both the existing and proposed model. The goals of this were to confirm the model's compatibility with the proposed design, evaluate the acceptability of the modeling parameters and approach, verify the model's calibration, and finally evaluate the model's accuracy in evaluating the impacts to the La Sura River. At this point, no negative declaration was made within that report. They were in agreement that the model is accurate, calibrated, and valid in use, in use for developing comparisons between an existing and proposed condition. With that, the review team tasked with making sure this is calibrated and valid, found it to be. Additional to that, we perform our own standard verification and calibration, which is delineated in our reports. An example of this was an onsite example of verification from a real rainfall event. Back in June of 2022, the watershed received roughly two and a half inches of rainfall in 24 hours. This would constitute roughly a two-year event. We had this modeled in ICM presently, so what we did was, we had our drone surveyists fly out, take video, and then subsequently, we took the same duration following the storm event in our model, compared that to the images seen, and found that they matched very closely at this location where there was supposedly no overland flow. Clearly seen in the picture, you can see the overland flow path is occurring. The ponding is roughly the same as the modeling results, and therefore calibrated. Getting into the second group of comments, we're looking at primary environmental concerns. The first of these is, "The proposed project would increase peak flows in the La Sura River, contributing to nearstream erosion and further degrading an already impaired waterway." Again, modeled peak flow rates show cumulative reduction to the La Sura River. We are reducing flow rates, we're reducing velocities. This will reduce erosion within the river. And this is achieved solely by the increase in capacity to the proposed mainline tile. This keeps more tile, more water, more runoff from the upstream, from extending from the limits of the tile, routing overland, picking up sediment as it goes, and flowing over the bluffs of the La Sura River, and rather keeps it in a controlled environment and routes it directly to the outlet. The second, "The proposed project runs through a national wetland inventory wetland within a crept land and discharges into a national wetland inventory wetland. Tranching through these wetlands could cause long-term degradation." So to this, "As shown within the final engineer's report, the technical engineering panel, with the local government unit being Blue Earth County, made a notice of decision in which the Wetland Conservation Act decision type was no loss." What this means is that the, the units prescribed to determine the effects of this have found that there is no long-term degradation as a result of this work within these wetlands. Additional to this, "The present tile in the ground is disjointed and failed. It is actively draining those wetlands. The new proposed tile would not actively drain those wetlands. The proposed tile would be watertight and would not accept any runoff in that area." Here is the copy that was attached in the report of that Wetland Conservation Act notice of decision, which the TAP approved. The decision type was no loss. The third and last of these, oh, yep?
Two minutes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, thanks. "The proposed project fails to comply with federal, state, and local water plans designed to reduce the environmental impacts of agricultural drainage." So these plans specifically noted in that, in that petition as the Clean Water Act, the Blue Earth County Water Management Plan, and the Minnesota Plan for the La Sura River are not, they rely specifically on those plans. An important note with those plans is that they're solely recommendation. They're not requirement or law. We did consider enhancement to water quality in this project, as is clearly noted with a multi-stage wetland storage area. This will provide nutrient capture and additional storage. Looking a little backwards, we can see from a 1991 aerial that this area was in fact functioning as a wetland storage area. There were structures put into place that were acting as a wetland. Over the years, those structures began to fail, and this area lost its capabilities of a wetland storage area. This proposed project, if approved, would reinvigorate that area, add storage, add habitat, and add, add nutrient capture potential. So going with all that information, we see that the engineer finds that these comments put forward within the EAW petition are general in nature. We're looking at large-scale plans, and none of the material evidence really specifically focuses on the project at hand. It does not recognize the verified modeling information put forward, and it fails to provide any material evidence that would suggest that this specific project would result in environmental degradation. The project will be a public benefit and contribute to the public welfare of the area by replacement of an aged, poorly-designed, and failing system, with a system which significantly reduces overland transmission and cumulatively reduces erosive peak flows delivered to the La Sura River. Based on the evidence put forward, the engineer believes that the supposed need for the completion of an EAW is baseless and without merit, considering the vetted and verified supplied data, and should be dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, then, thank you both for being very timely. I appreciate you, Chair. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd ask Hannah to come back up and kind of go over our next steps with us.
Yes, thank you.
Were there any clarifying questions at this time from the commissioners for Jacob?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Hannah, please.
Yes. First, does the board have any general questions or topics of discussion they'd like to touch on?
I don't at this point.
Okay. So I would like to ask the board a few questions, just to encourage some discussion so that we have an accurate finding, findings prepared. And I would like that to be based on the petition and the evidence that you've heard today. So first, I would ask the board its thoughts on the viability of the evidence presented by petitioners. And I would ask you to discuss of whether or not you believe the evidence presented by petitioners in the petition or taken today is valid or supportive of their claims.
For the study of the EAW, just so I'm clear?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I think they bring up a lot of really good points, and this gets to be an issue that we are seeing more and more every day, every month, and things that we have to deal with. I, I don't have any reason not to believe the stuff that's in the report, but I'm sure you're going to get to this question. I was happy to see that ISG has gone over and above what we normally do for ditch systems, but that's probably a different part of the discussion. So I don't have a whole lot to add about what I've seen from the report at this point.
And I would say regardless of where we're at in discussions, just have, I guess, talking about the comparative evidence from ISG to petitioners and your thoughts on that.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I'll add to that just a little bit then. Again, I've been doing this for 22 years. It's changed a lot in, in ditch hearings, ditch log, the way we operate. This is just becoming something we have to start dealing with. And I'm not going to ask the question, if I'm, if I'm making the assumption wrong, someone clear me up, but I think our staff, ISG, went over and above what we normally do on improvements or repairs for this project, as we do for all projects. At the end of the day, I think the county staff, ISG, work extremely hard to try to slow down the waters, do better environmental work, trying to keep these ditches working better. The armoring of how they're going to, when the water gets discharged, all resonates really well with me, and I, I think that they do a good job with that. And this is actually getting taken out of, as far as I understand, out of the petitioners or the farmers levy, so it's paid for by the farmers. And they're doing these extra studies, which I support, but at some point, we have to try to figure out how much should the farmers and the ditches be paying for. But I, I was happy to see what they did with this ditch to try to resolve some of these issues with the water and the erosion.
I guess I'll add, I appreciate the verified modeling information in the engineer's report. Certainly have some concerns that, that they brought up, that without any material evidence in the petition, and being more, more general, you know, that's concerning. Typically, as we talk about these things, we want to, we want to make sure there's specific evidence, there's something specific to, to this project and not just something general in nature.
If there's no further discussion on that point, I have one other question I'd like you to discuss. Based on the evidence presented in the petition, the engineer's final recommendation and the comments that you heard today, do you find that the project has the potential for significant environmental effects because of the nature or location of the proposed project?
Mr. Chair? I think with the report we got from ISG, I don't think it will have an impact on the cumulative water flow in the river at this point. I think the mitigation they're doing looks like it'll work fairly well to me.
You know, certainly, it's always good to see, and it, you know, we're the unique spot in Blue Earth County. You know, we have more miles of river than any other county, and a lot of watersheds. Blue Earth County's been an active participant in the One Watershed One Plans, WAT-1 being the first, and certainly been involved in Gaburba, where it now with the Blue Earth in Minnesota, La Sura watershed. That plan has been approved by Bowser. So I guess my, my, my question is, and I'm not sure who, who is the right person to answer it in the room, as we talk about environmental effects, I certainly feel that this, this project does not have significant negative environmental effects on, on the, on the judicial ditch 33. My question is, as we look at the One Watershed One Plans, generically or La Sura-specific, because that one is done, how does the One Watershed One Plan, and we're all about continuous improvement in agriculture and everything else, do we, is there potential for significant increased positive environmental effects because of the One Watershed One Plan and some of the things that are happening with that? In other words, this, we're looking at this, at this shot at time today, as we're making decisions specifically on this, but we always strive to get better, that continuous improvement. Are there some things that would now have been approved by the Board of Water and Soil Resources in the One Watershed One Plan that actually have, that do do significant environmental effects, but those environmental effects are positive environmental effects? Does that make sense to you?
Yes. So I would say that these are specifically looking at negative environmental effects. So if there is a potential for harm to come to the environment based on this project, that's what we would be looking at today and why you would order an EAW. Yeah. It's not just general environmental effects, considering...
And as we look at this project specifically, correct me, but it was pointed out in the engineer's report that the peak flows were less than or equal to current, and cumulatively there would be reduced flow. Is that correct?
Cumulative peak flows are reduced, as I'm modeling them.
And it's not peak flow, I mean, we've got climate change, there's, you know, we, we need to realize we have more intense rainfall over less days, you know, so as we try to, to work on those peak flows. So with peak flows, we would have reduced flow with this project, correct?
Correct. Reduced peak flows. Reduced cumulative peak flows.
Thank you. Other questions?
Not so much a question, Mr. Chair, but more of a comment. And again, the things we're doing on not just this ditch system, but many ditch systems to try to protect the environment are positive to the environment. So it's not a, a negative, but I would just like to call that out, that why I don't think there's a whole lot of negative stuff in this one is because we're doing more positive stuff. But the, the peak flows are less, and the armoring of the banks to keep the sediment out, I certainly think that the county and ISG are doing the best they can at this point. And I think it's an improvement on the system. So it's not negative, it's positive.
All right, commissioners, if there's no further discussion, I do have a draft findings in order prepared for you to issue your decision on the, on the necessity of the EAW. So you would either be denying the petition if you find that there is no significant environmental effects, or approving the EAW and issuing an order for that to be conducted if you do believe that there is significant environmental effects.
Okay, and before we do that, and I'm not sure, and I'll, I'll take all, all counsel from all directions, being a first-time chair, I know this, we do have the ability to do a closed session with legal counsel if, if requested. I don't know if this would be the time, but I, I would just ask, is there any desire by board members to do that? Do we have a need for that?
I don't think I do.
Okay. All right. Continue, please.
So I would just look for a roll call vote on...
You have to call for a motion, Chair.
Yeah.
Yep. So we've, we've got the, the findings in order in front of us. If there's no other discussion, and reminding the board, we're acting as the RGU at this point, as we've, we've, we've looked at this, this review. At this time, it would be appropriate to, and it will be roll call vote, as, as already mentioned. We haven't found any significant environmental effects specific to this, so at this time, it would be appropriate for a motion to adopt a negative declaration as the RGU. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
I would move that.
Okay. We have a motion and have a second. Discussion on the motion to adopt a negative declaration.
I don't know any other comments, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I guess I appreciate both, both parties. I appreciate the, the concern for the environment. That's always very important to everybody. We have a, a, we respect ISG and our staff, what they do, and I, I respect the petitioners a lot. But in looking at, at the petition and looking what's going on, I think we're, we're covering a lot what, what the concerns are, and solidly boarding with this.
Okay. Any other discussion? So I'll just remind the board that there's been a properly moved and second, a motion based on the adopted findings of fact and record of the decision that no environmental assessment worksheet is required for Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch 33 Improvement Project.
Commissioner?
Yes?
I would just like to clarify that this motion would be adopting the findings in order.
Okay.
So that hasn't been adopted yet. This would be the motion to do so.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, maybe page eight of the material related to the findings...
Okay.
...as an order statement, maybe if you wanted to read that.
All right. So on, on page eight, based on the foregoing findings... So on, on page eight, based on the foregoing findings and the entire record of proceedings before the board, the board acting as the Drainage Authority for Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch Thirty-Three hereby denies the petition to commence an environmental assessment worksheet procedure. Are everybody on page eight?
Yep.
Are we ready to vote? Stephanie had asked for a roll call vote, please. And this is for the, the motion to adopt a negative declaration, no, the findings in order. I need some order.
Commissioner Pebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunder?
Yes.
Commissioner Stunberg?
Yes.
Chair Paff?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Um, that has findings in order have been adopted.
All right, commissioners, now I would direct your attention to the, um, resolution that, um, I believe you all have in front of you as well. And this resolution is to approve the findings of fact and record of decision for the proposed Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch Thirty-Three Improvement and the negative declaration of need for an environmental, environmental assessment worksheet. And the purpose of this resolution is to confirm the findings of fact and record of decision to formally issue a negative declaration and to give Blue Earth County staff the direction to publish, um, based on the Minnesota Rules four, four, one, zero, point, one, one, zero, zero, subpart eight. The, this declaration and findings of fact must be issued to the Environmental Quality Board within five days, as well as the project proposer, the petitioner's representative. Uh, so those three parties, and this also would give the effective date of the passage immediately.
Okay, so it'd be appropriate to, to move on this resolution at this time?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. Discussion on the resolution.
All right, Mr. Chair is saying that, yeah, we've gone through a lot and we had a lot of discussion and we've had, uh, the gentleman that came here and also the ISG. And, uh, I think, um, uh, we're ready to, yeah, move it along.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote on the resolution? And ask for a roll call vote, please, Stephanie?
Commissioner Pebo?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Stunberg?
Yes.
Chair Paff?
Yes.
The motion is approved, the resolution is adopted. Is there anything else, Hannah, that we need to do, um, on this topic?
No, this is concluded.
All right, this is concluded. We are now go to CD eighty-six hearings. We have two additional.
Mr. Chair, if I may, a question. Again, Jerry Wilhelm for petitioners. I just simply ask that the material that I handed out to you be made part of the record for this purpose. Is that acceptable? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the next item on the agenda, item number four, tab number one, is the County Ditch Eighty-Six Branch Two and Three Acceptance Hearing. Um, the first item is to review the agenda. Um, are there any, will we review the agenda, please, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Okay, hearing no changes. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes, the agenda is approved. Purpose of today's hearing is to receive comments from all parties interested in the improvement to CD eighty-six, branch two and branch three. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. We'll ask staff to review the jurisdictional documents, hear from the appointed engineer, and then open the hearing for public comments. I'll ask that we start with Blue Earth County Drainage Staff Craig Austenson to review the jurisdictional documents. Craig, please.
Okay, uh, this is in regards to County Ditch Eighty-Six Branch Two and Three Improvement. This is the acceptance hearing. The background, uh, Blue Earth County Ditch Eighty-Six is in Beaufort in Decorah Townships. Uh, Blue Earth County Drainage Authority established the improvement October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. The project was awarded to Digger Enterprises. The property and environmental resources department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petitioned improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractor. The purpose for an acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance hearing also starts a three-year warranty period for tile work and a one-year warranty period for open ditch work. Today, we are asking the Drainage Authority to accept the final, the draft, final findings in order approving the engineer's acceptance report for the County Ditch Eighty-Six Branch Two and Three Improvement Project and release any final payments due to the contractor for the project and damage payments to the landowners.
Okay, you've heard that. I would ask, thank you, Craig, I'd ask for a, a motion to accept the jurisdictional documents into the legal record.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, jurisdictional documents are approved. Next, I will ask ISG to come up and review the engineer's report.
Okay, I'm Jen Widmer, PE, standing in for Chuck Brandl today to cover the final acceptance of the CD eighty-six projects. Um, so we'll start off with branch two and three. Here's the Blue Earth County Ditch Eighty-Six Watershed. Um, the red boundary is the, um, project watershed. It's a little over five thousand acres. Uh, the green box in the middle here is the location of the Branch Two and Three project. Um, so you can see this green line, um, it kind of reroutes the top ends of Branch Two and Three tiles and reroutes it into the ditch. Um, we'll talk about lateral X later, but the CD eighty-six timeline, the FERs were approved October twenty-twenty-two, uh, final plans and advertisement for bids were December and January twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Bid date was January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Branches two and three were awarded to Digger Enterprises, who were the little bidder. Um, lateral X, which we'll discuss next, is, was awarded to Leland Drainage, who was also the little bidder. Uh, so here is an image of the construction of Branch Two and Three done by Digger Enterprises. Uh, construction was about a month from June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, ended July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Project was televised August eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Final punch list was done August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Um, and final acceptance hearing is today. Here are a couple pictures of the tile installation for the Branches Two and Three project. Um, you can see embedded with rock, um, there's a drop intake there, tile connection. Um, final payment, the FER estimate was one hundred, one hundred and six thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and twelve cents. The awarded bid was ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, came in under the estimate. Total construction costs were eighty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars and eighty cents. Um, the cost savings were primarily because we overestimated the, um, tile connections than that were actually in the field. Uh, here is the Digger Enterprises warranty bond and contractor affidavit. In conclusion, it is the engineer's opinion that the contractor, Digger Enterprises, has satisfactory completed, um, in accordance with plans and spec, specifications. They have provided the required submittals for final payment, um, signed final pay request, IC one thirty-four, consent of surety, warranty bond. Um, ISG recommends accepting the work and approving final payment to the contractor. Uh, do we wanna talk about damages and abandonment now, or do we wanna save that for the end?
Whatever staff recommends, as long as we don't forget.
Yeah, abandonment, yeah, should probably be mentioned.
Okay, we'll skip to that. Uh, here's the CDC, uh, eighty-six, branch two and three damages. Total temporary damages were six point five two acres, all compaction damages. Um, and then the Branch Two and Three abandonment, everything south of the proposed improvement uh, will be abandoned, and that was agreed upon with the landowner, too. Um, so, yep, just the northern little chunks of the existing tile are kept in place. I think, yep, the engineers compiled the construction damages, abandonment maps, as-built drawings. Um, those are submitted with the reports, um, and we recommend payment of the construction damages and the abandonment of the existing systems as denoted.
Okay, we've, uh, heard the engineer's acceptance of contract report. Thank you for that report. Are there any clarifying questions from the board on the engineer's report? Seeing done, we'll open, uh, the public comment portion of this hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or are not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing, wishing to make comments? Please come to the podium. I'll ask for the second time if there is anyone wishing to make public comments on County Ditch Eighty-Six Improvement Project. And I will ask for the third and the final time, anyone wishing to make comments for CD eighty-six. Seeing, hearing no further comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask if there's, uh, further questions or comments from the board.
I don't have any questions or comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, seeing done, I would ask for a motion and a second to accept the drafted findings in order approving the engineer's contracting, acceptance report and order any final payment being issued to the contractor.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, the, uh, report, the findings in order, um, is approved. Now we need to, um, do anything else? The abandonment part is part of that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so does that, that concludes our CD eighty-six, branch two and three hearing?
Yes.
Okay, our next item on the agenda, um, number five, tab number two, is the County Ditch Eighty-Six Lateral X Acceptance Hearing. Is that lateral ten, or is it really a lateral X as an alphabet?
X is what, yes.
X is an alphabet, thank you. Um, I would ask the administrator, uh, to, to review the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, seeing no changes to the agenda, ask for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the agendas, the agenda is approved, as printed. Purpose of today's hearing is to receive comments from all parties interested in the improvement to CD eighty-six, lateral X. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review jurisdictional documents, we'll hear from the appointed engineer, and then we will open the hearing for public comments. Craig, uh, would you please review the jurisdictional documents?
Okay, this is a hearing regarding County Ditch Eighty-Six Lateral X. Blue Earth County Ditch Eighty-Six is in Beaufort in Decorah Townships. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority established the improvement on, on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. The project's awarded to Leland Drainage and Excavating. Uh, the property and environmental resources department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petition improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractor. The purpose of the acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance hearing also starts a three-year warranty period for the tile work and a one-year warranty period for the open ditch work. Today, we are asking the Drainage Authority to accept the draft findings in order approving the engineer's acceptance report for the County Ditch Eighty-Six Lateral X Improvement Project and release any final payments due to the contractor for the project and damage payments to the landowners.
Okay, we've heard the jurisdictional, uh, documents, um, and notices. Would be appropriate for a motion to, uh, uh, adopt, accept them into the legal record?
So moved, second.
We got a motion and a second, discussion, or we're ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, jurisdictional documents and notices are part of the legal record. I would now ask ISG for the engineer's report.
Okay, Jen Widmer again with ISG. Uh, again, CD eighty-six watershed, a little over five thousand acres. Um, this project is proposing to construct a new lateral, lateral X. Um, you can see the project area, uh, the sub watershed is outlined in purple in the south end of the watershed. Um, so you can see here, there's an existing private tile, um, that runs in the south end of this. Um, we're proposing to put in a public tile. Again, the timeline, FER was approved October twenty-twenty-two, um, advertised in bid December twenty-twenty-two to January twenty-twenty-three. Bid date, January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The lateral X contract was awarded to Leland Drainage as a little bidder. Here's a picture of the lateral X construction done by Leland Drainage and Excavating. Construction took about two weeks, um, from May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three to June first, twenty-twenty-three. Televising was completed July fifth of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, there was no final punch list items, and so final acceptance hearing is here today. Here are a couple pictures of the construction, um, the tile outlet into the ditch and the main tile line, the road crossing included with that. Here's the final payment. Uh, the FER estimate was eighty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents. The awarded bid was seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, came in underbid. Construction costs were seventy thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. We received, uh, Leland's warranty bond and the contractor affidavit. Um, conclusion, it is the engineer's opinion that the contractor, Leland Drainage, has satisfactory completed the contract in accordance with the plans and specifications. We've received Leland's final pay request, the IC one thirty-four, consent of surety and warranty bond. ISG recommends accepting the work and approving the final payment, um, to the contractor. Damages, again, uh, temporary damages were three point seven nine acres. Uh, it was all compaction damages. And there are no abandonment proposed with this because the existing tile that was there is private, not public. So there will be no abandonment with this project. In conclusion, um, we've compiled the construction damages, the abandonment maps, the as-built drawings, um, which will serve as the permanent record for the construction project. ISG recommends payment of the construction damages, and there is no abandonment of the existing system for this project.
Thank you for that report. I'll ask, uh, is there any clarifying questions from commissioners on the report?
No, thank you, Jen.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute time limit. County administrator will give a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allowed, allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments? I would ask if there's anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch Eighty-Six Lateral X Improvement Project. And I will ask for a third and the last time for anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch Eighty-Six. Seeing, uh, no further comments, I will close the public. Seeing no further comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask if there are further questions from the board.
I have no questions or comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this time, it would be appropriate for a motion to accept the drafted findings in order approving the engineer's contract acceptance report and order any final payments be issued to the contractor.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Any discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's carried, the report is adopted, and I believe this concludes County Ditch 86 Lateral X hearing. Can everybody do two more drainage things before we take a break?
You bet.
Item number six, tab number three, is County Ditch One Change Order. Ryan, please join us if you would.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Ryan Henneker with Blue Earth County Drainage Management. I have a quick change order to discuss for CD One. As part of ongoing awarded repair work for County Ditch One, which is located in McPherson and Meadow Townships, a request for a change order has been presented. The request for change order number one pertains to replacing the current township road culvert located on our 613th Avenue in Meadow Township. The proposed cost for this change order is estimated at $31,323.50 and is a Meadow Township road authority cost. This morning, we request the Drainage Authority for County Ditch One approve, excuse me, award and approve the change order in the amount of $31,323.50 to Leland Drainage and Excavating. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried, the change order is approved. Next item is tab number four on page 74, our Negative Ditch Balance Resolution.
Okay. The background, the following attachment is a resolution to advance capital funds to the ditch fund. This resolution is prepared annually by the Blue Earth County Finance Department for board action. Recommended action, the approval of the attached resolution for the advancement of $10,271,260.40 from the capital fund to the ditch fund to cover deficit cash balances. This advance will be repaid plus 8% interest.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, what are your wishes?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is 10:22, we'll take a 10-minute break, reconvene at 10:32. Planning and zoning.
Pardon me?
Just for clarity purposes.
Good job, Chair.
Okay, at 10:32, we will reconvene and we are to agenda item number seven, tab five, planning and zoning. Please come forward.
Good morning, John.
Good morning.
All right, John.
John Considine, County Zoning Administrator. Our first item here this morning, Mr. Chair, is PC 04-24, which is a request by Love Like Jesus Ministries for a review and approval of a conditional use permit for a church or house of worship. The property is zoned agricultural and is in part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 25 in Mead O Township, and the site address is 14195 626th Avenue, Mapleton, Minnesota. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicant was present and addressed one of the conditions relating to compliance with accessibility standards. The applicant stated religious facilities were exempt from the American and Disabilities Act accessibility standards for facilities. As staff reached out to the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry regarding this exemption, as staff had confirmed, the religious exemption exists and that condition has been removed. Following the discussion with the applicant, there was no further comment from the public. Members of the Planning Commission provided general comment on the past transfer of development rights for the property and the reuse of the structure as a church. In following discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And the board action item this morning for this item is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moved to approve.
Okay, we have a motion.
Public hearing. Oh, it's a public hearing. Sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I forgot to put that.
Yep, so we will, we will, first I'll ask if there's any clarifying questions on the staff recommendation.
None for me.
Okay, at this point then, we will open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. As was mentioned, we'll make sure that comments would be limited to five minutes, be respectful. We'll ask you to come to the podium if you have any questions or concerns. So I will open the public comment portion of this meeting. Are there any, anyone wishing to make comments on this, this recommendation? This conditional use permit, I'm sorry. I'll ask the second time, anybody wishing to make public comments on this conditional use permit? And for a third and final time, I'll ask if anyone wishing to make comments on this conditional use permit. This time, I will close the public hearing portion and ask if there are any other clarifying questions from the board members.
I do not have any questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, seeing none?
And I will make.
Now, appropriate time would be for that motion, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion.
I don't have any questions or comments, Mr. Chair, but this is just exciting, seeing this follow along use get put back into a church. I wish the best of luck to them in the future. So thank you for doing this.
All right, anything else? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, the conditional use permit is approved. Next, please.
All right, Mr. Chair, next item is PC 28-21. It's a request by Travis and Samantha Wendland and Robert and Sherry Lorenz Revocable Trust for review and approval of a preliminary and final plat of Wendland addition, which creates one lot and one outlot. The properties are zoned rural townsite and are in the urban fringe overlay district of the city of Mankato. The property is located in the west half of the southeast quarter of Section 14, South Bend Township. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicant was present and available for questions. There was no comment from the public. The Planning Commission members all indicated they had no questions or concerns with the proposal. And following that discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and constitutions, conditions, conditions recommended by staff. And the board action item this morning for this is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation.
Public hearing.
Is there a public hearing portion of this?
Mm-hmm.
We will open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to make comments on this? We will limit to five minutes. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on this? Wendland addition. I'll ask for a second time, anyone wishing to make comments? And I will ask for a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments on the Wendland addition? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion and ask if there's any other clarifying or follow-up questions from board members.
I have none.
This time, a motion would be appropriate.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carried. The, it is, the motion is approved. Next item.
The next item is PC 03-24. It's a request by Ray and Lisa Winter for review and approval of a preliminary and final plat of Winter Haven Vineyard and Nursery subdivision. The plat will create one lot and one outlot from an area not currently platted in a portion of Lot 26, Lot 27, and Lot 28 of Truman subdivision. The property is located in the southeast quarter of Section 13 McPherson Township. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicant was present and available for questions, and there was no comment from the public. The Planning Commission members all indicated they had no questions or concerns with the proposal. And following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And do we have a public hearing as this portion?
Yep, yes.
Okay, I would ask if there's, we will open the public hearing portion. Are there any comments from the public? I'll ask a second time if there's any comments. I'll ask a third and final time, any public comments? Seeing no public comments, we will close the public hearing portion and ask the board if there's any follow-up or clarifying questions.
I do not, and I would move the resolution based on the recommendation by the Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried, it is approved.
The last item here this morning is PC 05-24. Blue Earth County is the applicant, and it's a request to amend Chapter 8 floodplain, Section 3.2, incorporation of maps by reference. The amendment will add a map reference to ensure that both index maps, as described in the memo, of the flood insurance rate maps for Blue Earth County are included in the county court of ordinances. Just a further clarification, our floodplain ordinance has been adopted, has been reviewed and approved by FEMA and the DNR. So this is just one item that was not included within the model ordinance provided by the DNR. So this is a minor item to add, reference to a specific index map. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report. There was no comment from the public. The Planning Commission members all indicated they had no questions or concerns with the amendment. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the amendment to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. And the board action this morning for this item would be adoption of the ordinance amendment based on the findings recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I bet we could do that without a public hearing.
We will need a public hearing.
Okay.
You would think we could do that.
Clarifying questions?
No, none for me.
Okay, we'll open the public comment portion, ask if there's any public comment. We'll limit it to five minutes. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on this addition? I'll ask a second time, is there any public willing to make comments? And for a third and final time, are there any public comments? Seeing and hearing done, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the board for clarifying questions or action.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So motion and second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, it is approved. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
We will go to agenda item number eight, tab six, Human Services. Mr. Phil Clausen, please join us if you would.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Phil. Thank you for hearing me this morning. I have a couple of action items and a couple of informational items to review with the board. Starting with the action items, the first one is a three-agency MOU that we have with Mankato EDA for Cherry Ridge, and also Southwest Minnesota Housing helps us administrate the grant and write the application. You'll see the money amounts that the EDA has rental assistance in over $60,000 and some admin fees. We have $43,000 estimated for in-kind support services through social supports, social work supports, and then the in-kind administrative support at $1,700. The MOU became dated and needed to be updated from August of '23, and it'll go through July 31st of '24. And then, Mr. Chair, if I could just roll into the fee policy, we've historically brought this before the board to update our fees. As you can imagine, there's a lot of complexity behind this, but if there are questions, I'd be glad to either try to answer those or come back to a work session if you have anything more specific about the way we do our fee policy. It is a uniqueness to Human Services in that we can charge fees and have some revenues for some of our services. So we try to do our best to be good stewards of that. We usually provide the board a summary of the changes, and so there's a two-page summary, and then the whole fee policy is there as well if you have interest. There are some charts about how the fees break down according to income. If you're interested in the full fee policy, I will not be going over on that today, but like I said, we're more than willing to talk more about that. Just in financial services, we're up to about 40 programs that we administrate just in that one place. And so it gets really complicated behind the scenes, and it's not like all of them have different fee policy parts, but there's enough differences that you really have to know how to navigate some of the complexity that's formed over time. Just a couple of things to draw the board's attention to in the summary, so in the two-page summary of changes, you'll see in the middle of the first page, under procedures, page five, the longer paragraph, talks about a change that we're proposing, and that is that there are times when clients would qualify for a 0% sliding fee. Most of these cases, they have no income, very little assets. But what happens is they're placed in detox or maybe a treatment facility, and they don't get the paperwork through the mail that we send out. And so when we can find that that's the case, it really can take a long while for us to get the billing right. And so there's a way we can expedite that, and that's what we're asking to be able to do, is when we see that they would be a zero fee, that we, we try to just do that as quickly and as efficiently as we can. So that, that is what page five notes are. And then also, just at the end of the second page, you'll see another one that I wanted to highlight, adoption and kinship assistance. This has been a bit of a hot topic and somewhat of a political topic. It's when a family has an adoption and has adoption assistance, and then that child needs to be placed in out-of-home placement, out-of-home care. And what happens to those resources that the family still receives for the adoption assistance. We have, up to this point, not chased down those fees because there's an infrastructure cost to obviously wanting a full, prepared spot for the kid to come back to. That now has been, when we talk about may and must, something we must change. So we have to bill the parents their adoption fees. They can claim any costs against those fees that they have and reconcile that. Otherwise, less $125, I believe is the amount. They do need to pay that towards the child's care in this, in this facility. And we've gone back and forth trying to see if there's other ways we can do this, and my summary to the board is there really is no other way to do this. So we have to bill that back. The parents can say we have these costs and put them against those adoption fees. If we don't do this on our part, they can lose their adoption assistance. So it's a very big deal if we don't get this right administratively. So that's just another highlight from there. And like I say, if you have any follow-up, either now or in the future, let us know, and we'd be glad to go into more detail about some of our fee policy. That's what I have, Mr. Chair, for action items, and then I do have a couple of informational items as well.
Okay, can we do the MOU and the fee policy together?
Yep, yes.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to, to approve those, both of those.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the Cherry Ridge memorandum of understanding, and the Human Services fee policy are approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Informational, please.
Appreciate it. Two things for the board's attention today, Mr. Chair. First, fraud prevention investigation services that we provide through Human Services. There is a, a page of data, and then also some definitions on the second page regarding fraud. I would draw the board's attention for the sake of efficiency to the box below the graph and the chart. You'll see back up to that, the state average for the cost-benefit ratio is $5.95. We're, we're a little short of that, 541. That's in the right lower part of the box I'm talking about. We are required to hit a $3 return on investment, or the way that we look at how we do cost-benefit ratio. And then the math is here for us to look at as well. There's direct cost savings that we're able to track, and in this case, for this particular year of 2023, it was over $577,000. Overpayments are also identified, and this past year was $117,000 plus. And then administrative hearings where people are disqualified for some of their benefits was another $27,000. So you add that all up to the total of $722,026, and then that goes against our costs, which is in that second line, which is $133,000, and that's how we get to our 541. So it, it's a good number, good report of what Ginger Peterson is up to for us, and she's always done a very nice job in this regard. I'll pause just to see if there's any questions or comments on fraud.
Questions?
Go ahead, Bob.
Just maybe a point of clarification. This is fraud prevention, is that correct?
Right.
Just want to make sure the board understands that these aren't necessarily benefits that were issued and recovered. These were prevented payments.
Correct. And some of those disqualifications, you know, start to head in that way. The criminal parts where we interface with Pat at times can also bring in some of that piece of if it's proactive or reactive. But yes, we're trying to get ahead of this and come alongside people as opposed to punishing in any one of these categories that are trapped.
So that kind of goes in line with the question that I had, and is, do you think by having this program, people are less likely to try to do something because we have an officer that's looking at it, or do you think people still try?
Yeah, well, Commissioner.
I mean, it's hard to quantify, but.
Right, Mr. Chair, no, I, I feel, and part of what I enjoy about living in a community our size is, yeah, we are a small enough town that people talk, and we hear it all the time. We know that if we do a good job in this regard, people know that we are out looking. It's like law enforcement, too, you see a presence. And so people hear stories that we are trying to hold things accountable, reasonably accountable, not coming down on people, but trying to come alongside, and they know that that accountability is there. So yeah, we're pretty proud of that. I know Ginger takes her work very seriously, and obviously comes from a law enforcement background, so, you know, she has a real conviction about trying to make sure things are the way they should be, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's a positive way to deal with.
Yeah.
That's something that could be very negative.
Right.
And maybe, maybe there's other services in there that they still end up receiving
Right.
that were available, but they're not getting things that they don't need. And some people probably don't know.
Right. And I'm sure Pat could tell us stories about the willful misconduct, which is part of the picture, you can't say it isn't, but it's rare. And what more, is more common is it's complex enough that people become confused, they're not sure, they go down a pathway that it was, something was true at one point, and things change, they have more income, they might not qualify for something. And so the honest mistake category is, is a big part of the picture. That's the lion's share. And then there's also people that willfully try to defraud the system, there's no doubt about that, but those numbers are actually quite small.
Yeah, thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll just move on to financial assistance. These are graphs that the board's seen prior. I, I do feel like my editorial comment would be that they're skewed a bit by COVID, and they're skewed a bit by this unwinding process that we're in trying to get people back signed up on their roles for health care and cash assistance and, and food support. So we're going to go over that, but like I say, I don't know if I would want to draw hard conclusions. I think we're going to see some volatility next year as well, when some of those, those pieces start to show themselves in graphic form. The first slide is on financial assistance caseload overall, and you'll see that it has grown year over year. There's a slight dip there, pretty flat. And like I say, I'm not sure that I would say that that represents all of our activities and what's happened, but it is a good snapshot of how things look. The second slide is more specific to health care programs, and you'll see the same kind of result where things are high and flat. So there has been growth over time, and the last couple of years, or three years, four years, has been at that more high level for health care. And like I say, we will see how that maps itself out here the next year or two. The cash programs are the next slide, and that top line graph shows a dip, and that is with regard to supportive housing or housing supports. I would want to maybe provide a guess to you all about what's happening there, because I don't think our need or the need in the community has gone down, and it's not dramatic, but it did dip down. And I think it reflects the struggle that group homes and facilities are having with staffing. So you guys are well aware of the workforce issues, and so it's that they don't have the staff to support the beds. We, we have the same amount of beds, we have the same need, I'm sure, but it shows that they're struggling to have the staff so they can be at full capacity, is what I think we're looking at here. And then finally, Mr. Chair, the supplemental nutrition, the food support slide, which you see an increase, which we would expect, given some of what we've been through again with COVID and other, other parts of our community, but putting out a lot of support to people who need it. So that's what I had for the board today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Good to see you all.
Good to see you.
Take care.
Thank you, sir.
See you.
Agenda item number nine, administration.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board minutes for March
5th.
I'll move the minutes.
We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to approve the minutes, ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the minutes are approved.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
We have a motion on the bills.
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of paying for the bills from February 29th to March 6th and March 7th to 13th, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the bills are approved.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number nine in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. I just have informational items for the board today. We have filled a social worker in our behavioral health case management area, also serving our clubhouse facility. Then we filled a registered nurse in our mental health center, also filled a correctional officer in the jail. And we had a promotion of a senior waste management specialist to the program coordinator at our household hazardous waste facility. We also filled a GIS and technology coordinator in our property and environmental resources department. And lastly, we've initiated recruitment for an office coordinator in our community corrections department. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Item number 10 in your packet then is a memo regarding a county extension committee appointment. The regional extension director has requested the appointment of Laura Fries to the county extension committee. This would be an appointment that would run from January of '24 through December of 2026. She is from Commissioner District 4, and so we're recommending approval of that appointment.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. She will do a good job. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, you will add her to the extension committee.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 11 in your packet then is a memo regarding a proposal. a proposed purchase of some litter containment fencing out at the Ponderosa landfill. You know, we have taken over the operation of the landfill, and we continue to see issues with litter control at that facility. We continue to try and take steps to control that litter, such as reducing the size of the working face where the litter is refused, is deposited. We are putting dirt and alternative daily cover over the active face as required to try and control litter. And then we're also reserving the right to close the facility when we have extreme wind events to try and limit the litter impact. Also, we've had staff out picking up litter, but we continue to see challenges with that. And so staff are recommending that we purchase some additional portable fencing that we would use on the active face. We move it based on the wind direction to try and capture that litter before it escapes our facility. It is fencing that has kind of an angle at the top, so the wind does just blow it against it and then flip it over. And so the proposal today is to buy 20 units of that fencing at $166,400. And then if we see continued need to kind of finish out a full enclosure with that portable fencing, we would maybe buy additional units in 2025 as well as 2026. But this would get us started to expand our litter fencing that we have out at the facility. So, looking for board support if you're so inclined.
I will move to approve.
No.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
I'd like to see what, how it works, I mean, it's interesting, yeah.
I was out at the facility late last week, and driving down the county road, I did notice that the wind has been carrying some of our stuff into neighboring properties. So I think there is a need for this.
We need to be good neighbors as well.
Yeah, I see that.
We have challenges with trucks and people bringing stuff into it, we can only control that so much, so--
Yeah, and we did recently impose some additional fees for uncovered or untarped loads. And so we are trying to take some of those steps to ensure that we're not leaving trail, so to speak.
Great, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, it is approved.
Item number 12 then is a memo regarding the public land survey system, the monument grant program. Staff presented to the county board at last week's work session to describe these as survey markers, trying to upgrade the number of monuments that we have available for survey purposes. This will be a grant application for up to $300,000. We don't know exactly how we stand in terms of the rating system as a part of that grant, but we have worked with Bolton and Mink and ISG to carry out the activity should we be successful for this grant application. And so seeking approval today from the board regarding a resolution that also is provided in your packet.
Okay, for the recommendation?
I will move approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion.
Nope, we went over pretty well in the work session the other day, so. If we did get the grant on this, is this something staff might want to try to budget in the future? Because it sounded like it would be an extremely big benefit to not only the residents in the county, but the highway department.
Yeah, we certainly could take a look at it, obviously, based on the number of monuments that we still need to locate and put in place. It does become a pretty expensive project, but yeah, how does that cost-benefit weigh out? We could do some additional analysis of that.
I mean, if we don't get the grant, if they feel that strongly about it, I certainly would entertain, you know, some talk. Maybe we can get ISG and Bolton and Mink to give us a little better rate or something if we did. Because I just, to me, it looked like a very beneficial program.
I know staff do have some capacity concerns that once these monuments are located, then we have work to do behind the scenes to get our legal information updated. But certainly, we could take a look at that.
I just-- That's all I have.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes, the resolution authorizing the application is approved.
Item number 13 is an attempt, that third time being the charm, to get a board calendar for our December meeting for our budget hearing. As the board is aware, we had initially scheduled a December 3rd meeting with the 2025 budget hearing there. We had some scheduling conflicts, and so we moved it a week earlier, but that continued to create some scheduling issues. And so bringing this calendar back for board consideration as we've now figured out a way to avoid those conflicts for the December 3rd meeting. So looking for approval of what was the original schedule, and now is revised though because of the change we made previously.
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
A second.
And a second discussion. Appreciate everybody's flexibility in this, to make this work. I think it's important that we have the adequate amount of time before and during and after the budget hearing to do that, so. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the calendar is approved as amended.
Item number 14 in your packet then is a financial status report for February 29th. You'll see total revenue sit at a little over 16 million against expenses of just under 22 million. So again, we're in that part of the year where we'll be drawing down reserves, waiting for our first half taxes to arrive. Our state and federal revenue, the top line of the report, shows that we have received more state and federal revenue this year than in prior, or last year. A lot of that is some turnback funding on County Road One, and so just timing issues with some of that reimbursement. Our transportation sales tax revenue, kind of the middle of that top section, you'll see that we are running almost 11 and 1/2% higher than last year. So those recoveries on our sales tax remain strong. On the expenditure side, maybe point out personal services, our wages and benefits, running higher than last year. I think that might be a byproduct of a third payroll in the month of February, which is a little uncommon. So I would expect at the March report, you would see more normal increase based on labor agreements and cost of living adjustments. Overall, things are where we would expect them to be, I think, at this point in the year. On the enterprise fund for the Ponderosa landfill, you'll see revenues are $708,000 against almost $1.1 million of expense. We did have a large piece of machinery that was purchased in this time period, so that is contributing to that deficit. On the second page, you'll see our cash and investment balances. Towards the top, the total available funds sit at just about 74 million. Our target is closer to 63 million. Down towards the bottom, then, our total county funds sit at $135.4 million. And so we continue to be in a strong cash position relative to those fund balances. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on this financial status report.
Any questions for Administrator? All right, seeing none, we go to agenda item number 10, reports on committees. Vance, will you start us off?
I can. I can. Let's hold on here. Let's see. We go all the way back to February 20th.
Well, or at least since March 5th, board meeting.
March 5th.
March 5th.
I know, Vince, you're going to say the GMG event and--
Mm-hmm.
And the Parks Advisory.
On March 5th. Yep, GMG. I had a NACO monthly membership meeting that day, and then the Parks Advisory. On the 6th, we had a department head meeting. On the 7th, I had a NACO Transportation Committee meeting on Zoom, and then 169 corridor meeting on Zoom. Let's see, we had, I had a detox meeting on the 11th. We had our county work session on the 12th. On the 13th, I spent the day up at the Capitol talking to legislators on transportation, for Transportation Day at the Capitol. On the 15th, I had a NACO credentials meeting. And that'll be it for my report, sir.
Thank you. Kent, please.
After our last board meeting, I did make the Greater Mankato Growth Luncheon, which was a good program, and you did a good job. Had planning zoning, but y'all have already seen that, just got done approving all those. Had my ledge meeting for my emergency communication board. I just getting spooled up and getting things up there with a couple of things we got going on. But Dana Wahlberg, who was the ECN Director, has retired, and so there is a search to get someone to replace her. Then the work session, and last night I had MVAC meeting, and we went through our strategic plan, and things are going fairly well with that organization. That brings me to the day, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mark, please.
Yes, we had March 5th, of course, had the GMG, and that was a good event. Then we had Parks Annual, and then March 6th had the department heads, and then March 12th, we had the work session. And that's pretty much official stuff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. As already mentioned, on March 5th was the GMG and the Parks Advisory I attended. The department heads was on the 6th. March 7th was on the canvassing board, approved that. SWCD meeting that afternoon, and then also attended the Mankato Township meeting that evening. On March 11th, we had a NACO ag policy leadership call. Work session on the 12th has been mentioned, also a CD 79 meeting. On the 13th, had the opportunity to participate on a panel of elected leaders with the Mankato Area Leadership Group as part of their legislative day. On the 14th, had conversation with Mike and others about a packaging bill up at the state legislature and how that could affect our landfill. Then on the 15th, was a Goberba policy meeting. We also had a call with Senator France about some of the concerns with the packaging bill and with landfills. And then 18th was a Blueworth River policy meeting. And that concludes my report. That concludes today's agenda. I would entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
We've got a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, we are recessed.
Thank you.